I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Niznik.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you.
We will begin our meeting with our land acknowledgement. Kitty Sargent, will you please read the land acknowledgement?
Boulder Valley School District resides and operates on land that is the ancestral homeland and unjustly and illegal taken territory of the Ute, Puebloan, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Apache, Navajo, and 48 other tribal nations historically tied to this land who have called this land home since time immemorial. We acknowledge the atrocities committed here, including the painful history of genocide, forced assimilation, and efforts to alienate the indigenous inhabitants from their homeland supported by the policies of the United States government. BVSD is aware of the many indigenous peoples, past and present, and their dignified nations and cultures who care for the land with strength and resilience. BVSD recognizes the histories of the land in Colorado and the survival of the many nations that carry their oral traditions into the present. It is BVSD's responsibility to educate ourselves, our communities, and our students so that we can embrace the wisdom and knowledge of indigenous people and actively stand together to address injustices. In offering this land acknowledgement, we affirm and honor the history, wisdom, oral traditions, and resilience of indigenous peoples and recognize the responsibility to care for and appreciate this land together.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, is there a motion to approve our agenda? Moved by Kitty, seconded by Stacy. Laura, can you call the roll?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. We begin tonight as we always do with the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson, good evening.
Thank you, Board President. Gephardt, members of the board, great to see you all this evening. Welcome, everybody, who was able to join us. Several updates this evening. So this week, many of you will recognize this name, Jessica Watkins. She is a former BVSD student, Fairview grad, also went to Lewisville Middle. She returned from space, her trip to the International Space Station, and visited her alma mater at Fairview High School and talked to students and staff about her recent visit and the experiences that she had in space. Later this week, she'll be going to Lewisville Middle. She and astronaut Jack Fisher both attended Lewisville Middle School and visited space, officially making them space pirates because pirates are their mascot. Jessica's part of the Artemis Program, and while she wasn't selected for the upcoming moon mission, we really are crossing our fingers that she'll be one of the first humans to travel to Mars. And so just a shout out to Jessica, and we're just so proud of all that she's accomplished and so thankful that she came back and shared her expertise with our staff and students at Fairview and Lewisville Middle. So we have several BVSD art shows underway. As you can see from some of the art that is displayed, we have artwork by our K-8 students on display at the Boulder Public Library through May 7th and Lafayette Public Library through May 19th. But you can see the work of our high school students and staff at the Derry Art Center through May 6th. Really, this is a great opportunity for us to recognize one of our incredibly talented employees, Aubrye, who's our coordinator here in BVSD for Fine and Performing Arts, for all of our teachers, which are shown here. I'm setting up some of the exhibits and just want to thank her and all of our teachers for all their hard work in making these shows possible. These mean a lot for our kids and for our parents, and so very excited about that work and thankful for our team to putting that together. And I'm not sure, Randy, if, I believe that there's a video that he's going to show. And so before we move on, one of the traditions, if you haven't had an opportunity to go to the big opening reception at the Derry Art Center, Boulder Tech's cosmetology program takes the opportunity to show off everything their kids have learned through a runway show, which is wonderful, where they show off their skills in makeup, hair, nails. And they actually did some of that live on stage this year, which was really fun. So we just wanted to thank our teachers and our kids for all of their talents, and it was really just a great month to celebrate the arts here in BVSD. Board members, last Friday, we held our second session of the Community Leadership Academy. As a reminder to the board and to our community, this is an opportunity for anybody in our community to learn more about BVSD and learn more about leadership. The session we had last Friday was led by our partners in this endeavor, Parent Engagement Network, and focused on building resilience and servant leadership, and did a great job of engaging the group. We've got about 40 to 50 individuals that are participating in this program. I want to thank Penn for their partnership, thank all of our participants, and thank board members that were able to be there. And then finally, for our last portion of superintendent's comments is our student moment. As you may know, April is Earth Month, and focused on how we can take action to preserve the breeding resources of our planet. Tonight, we have a student from Fairview High School who's been leading the effort with his fellow knights, and this is Sam Morgan. Sam, welcome. We're excited to hear what you have to say. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. As you said, my name's Sam Morgan. I'm from Fairview High School. The reason I'm here tonight is because I'm the leader of a club called Fairview Institute. My background includes, next slide, my background includes a number of years in student government, where I learned the importance of advocacy, and several science fair projects where I learned about the mechanics of climate change and the importance of evidence-based research. Next slide. Fairview Institute is a club that was founded by Peter Sumitot, a science teacher at Fairview, with the mission for students to drive the change that they want to see in the world. Recently, the work towards that mission has included environmental activism and other community engagement efforts. Next slide. These are a few of the projects that we have been engaging in and that we have planned. We did a tree replenish campaign last year in 2022, where we partnered with other environmental clubs at Centaurus, Monarch High, Boulder High, and Peak to Peak, and we planted around 2,300 trees around Boulder County in response to the Marshall Fire. We also recently have been engaged in a project called, that we have called Solar Chargers for Ukraine, where we have partnered with local Ukrainians and Sunflower Seeds Ukraine to host two events where we have added USB inverters to donated solar panels. These panels and chargers have been sent to elementary schools in Ukraine without access to reliable electricity. Over the last few years, we've also virtually met with environmental lobbyists and aides to Boulder's representatives in the U.S. House of Representatives and the U.S. Senate. We are also partners with the local chapter of Citizens Climate Lobby, an organization that talks with representatives with the goal of passing legislation to address climate change. This year, we have, we as a club have brought back the Trip Tracker Program to Fairview that is a district initiative, and it's intended to motivate high school students at Fairview to pursue environmentally friendly modes of transportation to go to and from school. One of our other projects is that we're planning to build an outdoor classroom at Fairview at the end of this year. We're currently in the planning stages, and we're partnered with the Play Boulder Foundation, a partner of the city of Boulder, local landscape architects, and we're talking to local businesses to get material donations. We'll hope to begin work in May and June this year. Next slide. Some of our community work, yeah, some of our community work includes the South Boulder Sidewalk Social in 2021, where we participated to help rebuild a sense of unity after the Table Mesa King Super shooting. We offered games for children, including an eco bingo, and had flyers about what the average family could do to decrease their carbon footprint. Fairview High School also has a fun tradition of letting clubs host local kids for a safe and fun trick-or-treating experience on Halloween each year, which is called Trick or Treat Street. For the last two years, we have run a room where we have games for kids that encourage sustainability, reusing items, and efficiency with power and water usage. We also have information materials for parents and adults. Later this month, we will be visiting Mesa Elementary with a program of presentations and games to teach kids about sustainability and little things that they can do on a regular day to reduce their impact on the environment and to encourage them to support renewable energy. Next slide. My contributions to this club include that I've been a member since it was founded in 2021, and I helped to decide which projects and opportunities we pursue, and I organize the projects and facilitate work for each member of the club. I also helped to run the communication for the club and facilitate partnerships with other organizations across our spectrum of work, from Sunflower Seeds Ukraine to the Play Boulder Foundation. In 2021, when the club helped to plant trees in response to the Marshall Fire, it was through my communication with leaders at other schools. We formed a team of leaders who communicated with businesses, the city of Boulder, and advertised the event. We worked together to plan the event for three months before the actual planting day, which was on Earth Day. This last fall, I also led the club's efforts to get solar panels for Fairview. After several members did research, I compiled it into a technical proposal, and I sent it off for approval to school administration and folks here at the district. And I understand that Gita Carroll, BVSD's Sustainability and Energy Officer, is pursuing solar power for several schools around the district through federal funding. I'm grateful for her support and the support of you all, and it's exciting to think that my research could come to fruition later this year. In that proposal, I considered many of the aspects of installing solar at Fairview, including financing, installation, and the power that would be generated. Overall, the last takeaway is, last slide, the last takeaways of this presentation are that activism can be frustrating, and many days little to no progress is made, but I've learned that those days are examples of why consistent action and advocacy are so integral to making a difference in the world. Thank you for having me.[824.23][824.23](APPLAUSE).
How great was that? Sam, would you mind taking a picture with us? It might be worth something someday, given all the work you're doing, so. I'll stand next to you. Board members, that concludes superintendent comments.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Anderson? Nope. All right. We will move on to public participation. Members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting were asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting their request to speak during public participation form that can be found on the BVSD website or by contacting the Board Secretary Laura Schaefer. Public participants have the option to attend the meeting in person or join and present their comments via Google Meets. The Board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. The Board does not endorse the comments of any speaker and reminds all who speak that they are responsible for their own speech. Please know that this is a listening opportunity for the Board. The Board does not engage in a dialogue or answer questions as part of public participation. The Board needs time to consider the comments made and may include items on future Board meeting agendas to address issues raised by our public and community. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that person to address the Board. One, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. To recognize that students often attend or view our meetings, speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. Please limit your presentation to two minutes. Let me put the clock up. If you run out of time or would like to share additional information, you may email the Board. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds remaining, you will see the orange card. Please wrap up your comments. At the end of your two minutes, a timer will sound and your microphone will be muted. We start with our student speakers tonight, and we have three. The first one is Mason Smiley. I don't see anyone named Mason Smiley coming up, so we'll move on. Is there a Charles Thomas C.T. All right. And the third one who signed up is Mikhail Benner. If they should show up by the end of student, by the end of public participation, we'll be happy to include them at that time. All right. Our next person is Katie Miles, and I will just remind people that to get the four full minutes, the person who's giving you the extra two minutes actually has to show up, and it's my understanding that our Board Secretary has made that very clear. And so Katie Miles will have two minutes.
What about now? Okay. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm Katie Miles. I've been a language arts teacher in the district for 13 years, and every year, I have the honor of working with about 150 of our bright, rising high schoolers as they prepare to transition out of middle school. This year has been a year of unrelenting tragedy for my school community, and considering the last few years, we are clearly not alone in experiencing traumatic events, but my students sure felt alone in navigating them this year. We were really lucky to be supported by the trauma team several times this year, but each time they left, I witnessed 150 13-year-olds still trying to process the events on Snapchat or in whispers at lunch, and it had me thinking, do we let 16-year-olds teach other 16-year-olds how to drive? No. But without creating a space in their day for intentional connection with a caring adult and a community of their peers, we do let them teach each other how to cope with grief, how to manage anxiety, how to listen closely without judgment, how to find hope in times of despair, or a sense of certainty in the face of a future full of the unknown. I'm here tonight to say that our students have never needed an advisory program or something like it, like they do now. And I know others have come to the Board and shared thoughts and research about why we should have advisory, but having taught in a school with a robust advisory program for seven years, I can tell you that the research doesn't illustrate even half the benefits that this opportunity brings for adolescents. I'm also painfully aware of the challenges that come with implementing an advisory program at scale, and despite these challenges, I also see how an advisory program would serve several other district initiatives, which I can email because I'm about to run out of time. But I just want to share with you some student voice. One of my students who wrote an op-ed about this topic this year asks of you, just finish my sentence, thank you. Olive wrote of teenagers today. She says, "We aren't being dramatic. We are not hurting. We are in pain, and we are terrified. We hide every struggle because we know you won't help. This time, I'm asking, please listen. This time, give us hope that everything will be okay. This time, do something." You've got a lot of teachers who are really excited to help do something, and I can email a few more notes, but thank you very much.
Please do. All right. Next, we have Caitlin Hosmer.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I return again to follow up with concerns about ash in the classroom and the need for post-remediation testing. I know you've received letters from concerned parents and may have seen a petition circulating that has almost 375 signatures as of tonight. At previous school board meetings, I shared my experience of finding ash on a filing bin that later tested at 7.5% char, which is a fire particulate composed of inorganic materials that would have burned on the fire. And just to give you some context, most insurance companies will remediate to achieve 2% or less of char in an inside building, and some even remediate to achieve non-detect levels, which is entirely possible. I've been encouraged by some positive developments in response to the parent concerns and the media attention. Mrs. Kepler, the principal at Fireside, requested deep cleaning at the school over spring break, which included taking out every single window, blind, and screen, and cleaning it, have a vacuuming all the carpets, and replacing all of the filters in the HVAC systems. In mid-March, Rob Price sent an email to the district saying that BVSD was investigating the request for additional testing and that he was having conversations with certified professionals in the field to determine the path forward. So my question for you is, what progress is being made at this point, and when can we expect to receive an update on next steps? Will BVSD continue to take the approach that testing is unnecessary, or will they take a more transparent approach? Given that there were confirmed fire particulates on a filing bin over one year after the fire, it's certainly possible that there are still fire particulates in the school, on the surfaces where the students sit, read, and learn. So my request for you is to please approve post-remediation testing. We want our children to be safe, and we want to know for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Anderson and the Board. You know who I am. I want to follow Katie Miles' comments on why advisory is a good idea for BVSD. I spent the last few weeks reviewing the last decade of data from the Healthy Kids Survey. During this time, key wellness indicators headed in the wrong direction. Since 2013, there's been a 75% increase of students who report feeling sad and hopeless, 25% increase in students who attempted suicide, a 233% increase in teasing because of race and ethnicity. Meanwhile, right now in our schools, 40% of students disagree that teachers care about them. 25% of students say they do not have a trusted adult relationship. This means that at Boulder High School alone, there are 500 children without a trusted adult relationship, and we know this is the single most important thing we can do to reduce suicide. I also studied Board Member Raj Paul's recent RFI for BVSD advisory programs. We discovered there are advisory programs, but they could be more successful with district support. Of BVSD's eight top high schools in terms of enrollment, three have a four-year advisory program, NuVista, Broomfield, and Centaurus. Of BVSD's 16 middle schools and non-charter middle schools, five have advisory programs. But from talking to teachers in these schools, I know these programs struggle with lack of funding, curriculum, and teacher training. Monarch's PKA advisory started out in 2018 as four times per week and has now been reduced to one time per week. Centaurus' program, I know for a fact, is struggling. We can fix this. To me, this is an easy decision. Mental health is a strategic priority of the district. We have a talented BVSD team with all the ideas and expertise to make this happen. 1,200 parents have signed this petition. Let's get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brittany's, you beat the buzzer. Next, we have Brittany Smiley. I'm guessing Brittany's not here since Mason Smiley was not. Next, we have John Nesslech, who is virtual.
Hi. Good evening. I wish that I could be there in person this evening, but work precludes. So the last time that we spoke was at the board meeting in March, one month ago. We had just had the swatting incident on February 22nd, followed by the shooting on the 28th of February nearby campus and the heightened police presence the next day, and then the second attempt, the hoax swatting on the 1st of March. And I implored you to use your voice and speak up. I pointed out that there were other visible dangers to the students, to children, not even hiding in plain sight. They're open and notorious. There were tents erected on the western edge of the campus, and we all know what happened shortly thereafter. I don't like being prophetic, and I won't say I told you so, but I did tell you so. 1, 2, 3, 16th, 17th, and the 21st of March, explosions and fires threatening the safety of our children and students and the general public, all of which could have been prevented had you used your voice. As Ross Weiner pointed out, our children deal with a multitude of issues and afflictions. They don't need this heaped upon them in addition to what they're already dealing with. This is an embarrassment. You have a voice, you haven't used it. I, as a member of a parent group, Safe Zones for Schools, have spoken with the district leadership. I know, Rob, you're in the room. We warned you of these things. I emailed you all and sent along photographs. Nothing happened. Worse, your Twitter account tweeted out some sort of idiotic response, saying, "Well, we spoke to the track team, and no one was injured, so must be okay." No, it's not okay. Do better. Use your voice. Look out for children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Liz Worley. I don't see Liz Worley. Or Wayland Harris? All right. And the last one is virtual, is Julie Hedlund.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I wish I was there in person. My name is Julie Hedlund, and in addition to having two children who went through BVSD, I'm also a multi-published children's picture book author, published through Little B Books, Penguin Random House, and others. In addition to being an author myself, I'm also the founder of the 12 by 12 Picture Book Writing Challenge, which includes 2,000 picture book authors and illustrators at all levels, from brand-new writers to multi-published, bestselling, award-winning authors. I'm speaking tonight to make myself available to you as a resource within the children's book industry, as an unwavering advocate of First Amendment rights, and in staunch opposition to censorship and book banning in our school libraries. Groups supporting these bans invoke words like liberty and parental rights, but liberty for whom? Parental rights for whom? The most recent data from the American Library Association, PEN America, and other organizations show that a vast majority of books being targeted for banning are those that feature characters, topics, or authors who are LGBTQIA, or Black, Indigenous, or people of color. In short, the proponents of these book bans are not offended by the words in these books. They are offended by the people these books represent, the history they represent. Imagine how damaging to a child to think, here's a book that includes someone who looks like me, feels like me, who identifies like me, has the experience like me, and it's banned. It's bad. I'm bad. Books save lives. Book banning- Books save lives, book banning can take lives. Please do not let life-affirming books be removed from our school libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our board, our public participation. And I haven't seen anybody showing up that wasn't here earlier. Laura, have you seen? I haven't seen anyone. So we will now move on to board communication. Board members, who wants to go first? Lisa?
Yeah, I thank you. I want to appreciate that conversation around the importance of not banning books and also comment on how nice it looks when there is sunshine in a room, which we are missing in here on this 83-degree day. Also, I wanted to share that last week I was able to testify on my own behalf at the Capitol for the Governor's Housing Bill, Senate Bill 213. We discussed this bill a couple of meetings ago with our Long Range Planning Committee in the context of ways we can combat our declining enrollment problem and support more kinds of housing for families and teachers across our district. For folks who didn't listen in, it was 14 hours of testimony, so I'm going to guess that's most people in the room. It was great to hear from teachers around the state who were testifying in favor of this bill, environmental and climate experts like Will Tour, and transportation and housing experts as well. This is a bill that has also been officially supported by Boulder City Council and the city of Boulder. And I was proud to testify in favor of all it can do for our community, and I look forward to its passage. And that's all I have.
Other board members, comments? Richard?
I want to thank the speakers that spoke tonight, and particularly Julie Hedlund, for the wonderful presentation she made on book banning. And I agree with her 100%. I also attended the state legislative session yesterday supporting a bill that was presented by my daughter, Lorena Garcia, where she was seeking some financial support that she received. Now she's got to run a bill to make that, to get that approval, to see if they can't continue funding translation for districts, for special education, IEPs. So I just want to thank her for that effort. And she had some wonderful testimonial there by parents from our school district that were there, thanking the school district too, by the way, for the efforts that we make to do the translation of IEPs. And also, I'm looking forward to the April session that's going to be held at Centaurus High School for Spanish-speaking parents on IEPs. Thank you.
Board members, Nicole?
I just want to say thank you to everybody that came here tonight and spoke virtually. Sharing your thoughts and ideas with us really is one way we can tap into the community. So thank you for that. I had the opportunity to sit in for a little bit on BVSD Leadership Academy this week. And I, given that it was, or last week, given that it was following spring break, I was truly impressed how many people still showed up for round two. And hopefully, they continue to show up. I think this is a great opportunity to share what we're doing, to help educate our community, and really bring people in to the good work that goes on within our district. With that, I want to put a plug. There is a BVSD Connects coming up, which I hope you can all attend and participate in. And then we are still, you know, on the hunt for and having opportunities for potential school board candidates for four of our districts that are up for election next year. So if you have an inclination or a desire, don't hesitate to reach out. A lot of what I've been doing this week since spring break is catching up and having coffee with folks who are interested. And it is, it's promising. And I would encourage anybody that has a desire. April, May, come quick. And then summer is really starting to feel like go time for running for the Board of Education. So if you're interested, please reach out.
Katie or Beth?
So piggybacking on what Nicole just said, I think all of us, I speak on behalf of the board, would be happy to meet with anybody who wants to talk about board service. So I'm just extending that to everybody. And on April 27th, is that right, Laura? We're having our last meeting, that's a virtual meeting. And we tried to schedule it virtually and at a time when people would be able to attend. So it's from 5:30 to 6:30. And you'll need to reach out to Laura Schaefer to get the link. But please, if anybody's interested, pass the word along because serving on this board is an awesome opportunity for you to get to know your schools and to give back to the community. And like I said, I think all of us are happy to meet with anybody. So please think about that. Just a couple of quick things. I don't think I mentioned this before, but the Colorado Association of School Boards hired a new executive director. His name's Dr. Jubel Yenney, and so we just welcome him. And I'm sure he is available to answer questions and kind of to lead CASB into our next stage of advocacy and support for Colorado School Boards. So we're really excited to have him here. He comes from Wyoming, and he's been on the job about, oh, not even a month, and he's already covered a good part of the state of Colorado. So as with Nicole, I attended the BVSD leadership. And shout out to PEN because they handled the presentations that day, and I think they were well-attended, good conversations going on in the room. And again, sincere thanks to Dr. Anderson and others for getting this launched as our kind of inaugural BVSD leadership. And we do have the BVSD Connects coming up, so please feel free to come to those meetings because it's a really good chance to meet with board members and to meet with administration. And sometimes to get many of your questions answered in a way that's a little less formal than, obviously, we can't answer questions here. I want to also say thank you to the speakers. I really appreciate the way the book banning was framed. I hadn't really thought of it that way, and I thought that was a really helpful way to think about it. So appreciate the comments coming forward on that. And then finally, I was able to attend the National School Boards Association Annual Convention. And I just want to share that the last speaker was the speaker who invented Siri. And he loves school boards. He could speak anywhere he wants, and he comes back to the NSBA conference. And his entire conversation was on ChatGPT. And I know that you, Dr. Anderson, have said that you, I see Lisa shaking her head. It's a little overwhelming, and he wants people to be paying attention and to try to get in front of, if there's any way to get in front of it. It's already, I see some people shaking their heads. We need to get knowledgeable about it, how's that? And he was, I'm going to try to figure out a way to share his talk because it was really informative. And he had the gift of being able to explain things that were really complicated in a way that even I could understand. So I thought that the conversation, I think I look forward to our conversations being led by our technology department and by you, Dr. Anderson, as to how we address ChatGPT as we go forward because the potential is huge and really exciting. But of course, as with everything on the internet, there's a downside and a fear about how it can be misused. And his advice was, and I checked with my daughter, who is a sophomore at an out-of-state school. And right now, their position is, you can't use it. And he was strongly against that as kind of a way to approach it because it is a tool, and people are going to use it, and we need to learn how to use it. So I just thought that paying attention to ChatGPT is something that we all need to think about going forward, especially as a board. And he came to our board, our special board meeting and asked, in the room, and the board meeting looks a little like us. And I think there were two people in the whole room that even done it. So I'm trying to get used to how to use it. So I encourage everyone out there. But I also look forward to having those conversations as we go forward, as we figure out how to use it productively in our schools and with our students and with our staff. So I will get back to us about if there's a way we can share that because I just thought it was really, really helpful and informative. So that's all I think we have for board comment. Are we doing okay? I think we're doing okay. We don't need a break. Okay. So we will now move to the consent grouping. Be patient, we've been on break for a couple of weeks. So we have a lot of consent groupings. So I will read them. Oh, information items. Sorry, I forgot, Allison. I will turn it over to, I got so excited about reading my long list. We have two information items. The first one is an update on impact on education foundation. And sorry, really, I'm excited to have you here. So I'd like to welcome Allison Billings, who is the executive director. Rob, do you have anything you want to say as introductory to this presentation?
I do. Thank you, Board President Gephardt, and welcome, Allison. And, you know, I would say over the past four to five years, the relationship that our district has had with our foundation has just become something that I'm incredibly proud of, one that's focused on our purpose. We have aligned values. You know, there was a point in time where, you know, I think that the foundation was a source of funding for the district. And I just believe it's become much more. I sit on the Board of Impact on Education. I think Allison's done a wonderful job and in true partnership. We're solving problems together. And I'm excited to have her here this evening to share with you all and to share with our public the impact, the impact on education has had on students and our community. They've been there in our biggest times of need and have stepped up in incredible ways, whether pandemic, Marshall fires, mental health crisis. We've been able to turn to them in ways that, and they've always answered the call. And so, Allison, welcome. It's great to have you here this evening, and we look forward to your presentation. I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thanks for having me. And you probably could give my presentation, Rob. But I appreciate the partnership with the school district. And this job is a, it's a really special, you know, my role as executive director. But our role as the foundation is a really special one. And I just don't see a way where we can do our work without working with all of the fabulous folks at BVSD. So, you know, each year that goes by, I have the opportunity to work with more and more folks and tackle more issues. And so here tonight to share a little bit about what we've been up to lately with all of you. And it looks like we're having some fun with the slides. Just the first one is fine, if we can start there. I'm not sure why it's. Okay. Well, that's fun. That's all right. We can scroll down to the second one. Because I think the important piece is that our investment in 2022 was the largest, I think, it's ever been. We invested over $3.5 million into, directly into BVSD. And that's the result of a broad variety of investments. Certainly, we had a big role in, Rob mentioned COVID. We're still, we were still spending down some of those dollars. But the Marshall Fire was a huge impact to our schools and something that we needed to respond to right away and that we invested then right away back into our schools. But we also have work in early childhood and in college and career readiness and ongoing learning tools. And I think anyone zooming is seeing all of it. Yeah, whatever works. Well, while they're working on that, what I want to start with is Marshall Fire in particular because I don't know that I've provided an update to the board specifically about that. And we raised $1.6 million specifically in response to the Marshall Fire. And so there is a lot of important work that we did. And I think it's, we've, you know, connected directly with schools that are impacted, with families and students, but want you all to know where we stepped in specifically. That's Slide 3, if you can get there. But the first is that we provided direct support. So we immediately got the list of all of our impacted students and all of our impacted educators. We did direct cash assistance directly to our staff for students. We obviously have to be a bit more careful about how we allocate resources. But we did partner with some fantastic local partners to provide all the needed supplies and pay for replacement supplies so that our kids could come back to school as quickly and as normally as possible when they were ready, and that whatever they needed would be there. So scientific calculators were there for them, and their band uniform was replaced, and their, whatever they needed in terms of their workbooks and their textbooks and whatever was missing in terms of school supplies. And we worked in really tight partnership with the BVSD team to make sure that where we could use BVSD's insurance, that was the first thing we did. But where that wouldn't apply, we just stepped in and we said, go, green-lighted all kinds of expenses so that kids could get back, not just to school, but to their music class. If they lost their instrument or a donated instrument wasn't quite ready, we paid for instrument repair, or we paid for whatever was needed to just get kids back to normal. But that, in the end, was a fairly small piece. We continued, we funded some transportation funding. So last school year and this school year, we're helping to pay for anyone who's been displaced by the fire and is now driving their kids to school to be reimbursed for that mileage. So last year, there was some McKinney-Vento support that we supplemented because it didn't pay for their full cost. This year, most of our families have some stable housing, so they're not getting any of that. But we wanted to make sure that families who are commuting in from elsewhere are able to do that and get their mileage paid for. Again, small piece of the puzzle because the big impact that we've made is around expanding mental health supports. So that became the immediate need. In January of 2022, we had this crisis response from surrounding districts. And we knew that that was, two weeks was not going to be enough. So we stepped in and committed over $500,000 to make sure that BVSD could hire four full-time mental health advocates to work for 18 months in BVSD schools and expand those supports. In an ongoing capacity, so this year, if we scroll down, thanks, Laura, we're continuing to make sure we pay for that transportation piece. But last year, school meals were free. Next year, school meals will be free. This year, they are not free. But for families impacted by the Marshall Fire, who opted in and told us that that would help them, we've been putting money in lunch balances to make sure that those students and those families have one less burden. And we've been funding free after-school care. So for the families who may need before- and after-school care, especially if they're displaced and living further from school, maybe it was easy to get your kid at 3 o'clock when you were around the corner, but it's a lot harder when you're 10 miles away. Regardless, though, any families who told us they wanted to take advantage of before- or after-school care, we're funding that. And then we've just launched some free online tutoring. It took us a little time to get that off the ground. But we are really, really pleased to be able to offer that to families who told us that their kids may have come back to school, but they weren't learning and they've fallen behind. So we're paying for some free virtual tutoring. But again, I mentioned for Marshall Fire, our big focus has been on mental health. And that's beyond just those folks who were directly impacted by the fire. You heard in some of the public comment, and I don't think you can go a day in this community without hearing about the youth mental health crisis. And that has been an important place where BVSD has asked us to step in. And so we've done quite a bit in that space. So the mental health advocates I mentioned, we funded in, over a year ago, for a year and a half. But what we've committed to is to continue funding those. So an additional $510,000 to retain mental health advocates for next school year, '23, '24. And you can see in these little bullet points on the side what that looks like. There have been a lot of individual students, families, and crisis support that's been offered directly from these individual mental health advocates who are BVSD employees. Impact is just funding them, but funding BVSD to hire them and work directly with our kids. A really exciting piece that I'm so proud of and excited to share with you all is our plan to continue something that was started at Monarch High School. So with some fire funds, August of this year, Monarch High School opened BVSD's first Wellness Center. And this is what I like to think of as like a Zen den, but it's a place where students can opt in at any point during the school day and catch a break, catch a breath, regulate themselves, and talk to someone. And you can see the numbers, they speak for themselves. But 40% of the student body at Monarch High went in voluntarily at some point on their own, just during the first few months of the school year. So on average, the Wellness Center is seeing somewhere between 60 to some days 100 kids popping in. The kids come in and they answer two questions. They type in their student ID, and they type in, "Where are you?" on a one-to-five scale, like a pain scale. And essentially, what the counselor, the Wellness Center coordinator over there is doing is triaging kids all day long. And it is a piece of the puzzle. It is not solving everything, but it is a place. And the feedback from Monarch has been so positive. And the number of students coming in and getting some coping skills and getting a place to kind of regulate themselves and move on has been so impactful that we have committed, Impact on Education, to funding Monarch's Wellness Center for next year, as well as at the other four comprehensive high schools. So there will be five Wellness Centers at Broomfield, Centaurus, Boulder High, Fairview, and Monarch High School. And again, one piece of the puzzle, but a really, really important resource for our students. But the other place that BVSD has asked for help is with training and resources. And so I'm very excited to welcome any of you who are not already planning to come tomorrow evening to a community conversation that we're hosting. We've got 240-something folks registered and room for more. So anyone who wants to come, there's a link on our website to register. It's free to attend, but we're asking folks to register. And if you can't make it tomorrow, the great part is that we're partnered with Comcast. So we'll be video recording, and we'll have a resource that we can. so we'll be video recording and we'll have a resource that we can share out with families afterwards. But these kinds of opportunities for parents to get resources, to ask questions, to learn about how they can help, and to really recognize that this is not just about anybody's kid or anybody's family, but these are community issues, and it's really going to take everybody working together. And I think the schools are a piece of it, but we have practitioners from the community. We have nonprofits for the community, from the community who will be there because it's a big enough issue that it's not for any one family to solve on their own or for the schools to solve on their own, but for everybody to come together and be part of. So that's tomorrow evening, but ongoing work to provide training and resources, especially for parents, is a place we'll continue to be investing. Of course, all of the crisis response around Marshall fire and the mental health crisis hasn't stopped us from doing the work that I think we're known for doing on an ongoing basis. So Wednesday, May 3rd, we'll have our Impact Awards, hope to see the board there. Just this morning, we surprised the Blake Peterson Lifetime Achievement Award winner at Monarch High School, which is always a really special, a special moment. But we do what we can to support the educators across the district, and we'll have a good time on May 3rd. But we support our educators by also funding what they need. And so this is our second year of having an Academic Opportunity Fund. This year, over 200 grants awarded, so $230,000 just this school year invested to 45 schools, to 218 different individuals to meet the needs that come up. And that sounds like a lot, especially when I think about how we go through so carefully to make sure there aren't other resources that can be used. Because sometimes educators may just not know of something that's available. And sometimes we've helped them find funding or helped them find the resource. But in a lot of cases, it's just something that they don't anticipate at the start of the year that's not in the budget, and there's no other way to make it happen. And so in those instances, we're really proud to be able to step in and support the educators in helping our students. And then, you know, of course, the bulk of our work is all about students, and we sort of see it as the ends of the spectrum. So on the very early side, we have our kindergarten readiness program. So we're funding, last summer was the first year that we worked in really close partnership with BVSD's Summer Learning Program. So BVSD provides summer learning for rising first graders through rising ninth graders, and then, of course, Course in Credit Recovery in high school. But for kids that are rising into kindergarten, it was sort of a gap. And we know that these gaps we see start really young. And so in great partnership with your team, Rob, we're able to bring on the first cohort of rising kindergarteners in summer learning, and really excited to bring that back again this summer. And then as our kids get ready to launch into the world and graduate, we've, we know there are places, and we've been working in close partnership on Grad Plus, but there's also pieces of getting ready for applying for jobs and working on your first resume and how to interview and what you write in your first cover letter that are skills that kids who may not otherwise get them are just going to take the job that their cousin's friend has because they know someone there instead of actually really seeking out something that aligns with their interests. So we launched our second Career Readiness Academy this year, just wrapped those up last week. So we've got 50 high school students who attended eight workshops. They earned a stipend and they got tons of skills, resources along the way. They each left with a resume, with places they're applying for jobs, with lots of interview preparation and skills. And so working with your team to continue to see how we can provide supplemental resources to kids as they kind of get ready to join the workforce and do that again next year. And then Crayons to Calculators is a program we've had for years and years. And that will, I don't know the day that that won't be important, but until then, we're committed to making sure that kids have the school supplies they need to start the school year off strong. So just started reaching out to all of our schools. Over 7,000 kids across the district will receive backpacks and school supplies, and that comes to them directly from their schools. No fanfare, right? No otherness with it. It is discreet, it is respectful, but it is making sure that every kid has what they need to start the school year off. And then finally, this is our 40th year. In fact, we're really close to our 40th birthday as an organization. It was April of 1983 that we were founded. So we're also, we're looking at a very fun 80s-themed gala in August, so mark your calendars for August 25th. But we're also thinking about our future as an organization. Forty years is a long time. And I've had the opportunity to talk to people who were on our board, who were on the school board 40 years ago, 30 years ago. The types of things that Impact on Education is investing in now, what we've invested in the past and what we've invested in the future, like it constantly changes where the needs are, but there's always been, and there will probably always be, a need for a foundation and a foundation that's strong. So we're kicking off an endowment campaign that you all will hear more about as the year goes on to sort of help us build a sustainable revenue stream for our foundation so we can always be here for the district and into the future. So that's kind of what's been going on. It's quiet. And I'm happy to take any questions or, yeah, Stacy. Or it's Kathy's job.
Stacy.
I was wondering if you could tell us who won that award that you just mentioned, and what is the criteria for that award? It sounds like it's really important.
It is. So Impact Awards recognizes someone from every school across the district. So each and every school is represented, and their schools select their individual. Blake Peterson is a former Board Chair of Impact on Education who passed away, and his family in his honor decided that because Blake cared so much about public education and about Impact on Education, that they endowed this award. And so the family chooses, and it's open to BVSD employees. It's been noteworthy in all the communication to educators and in our communications. So it's open to anyone in the community to nominate an outstanding educator who's made a lifelong commitment to education. So we've had some pretty fantastic folks in the past. Today, it was Glenn, who is a special ed para at Monarch High School and is an outstanding individual who you'll get to, there was a student video the students at Monarch made about Glenn and the impact he's had. Having just met him for the first time this morning, shy, shocked, and very tall, and I think a force with kids, the impact that he's had on kids has been outstanding. And he's been in BVSD for almost 20-something years and at Monarch High School for the past 10 or 15. So we'll learn more about him on May 3rd when we're not shocking him with balloons in the middle of his classroom, but a really outstanding educator and super proud of him.
Great, thank you. And thanks for all you do.
Thanks, Stacy.
Beth?
Wow, yeah, you haven't been busy at all, huh? Thanks so much for that presentation. And I want to go back a little bit to the Wellness Center that you were discussing and take a moment to kind of shine a light on that and maybe learn a little bit more. You said you're going to be scaling it, so what does that look like? And what can we do to support you in those efforts?
Super. Well, we've been working, again, you know, I, when I took this job, really felt like our relationship, our partnership with BVSD is kind of everything, and I'm really not interested in funding anything that the district doesn't want. So this is, this is a concept that was the brainchild of Neil Anderson, actually, at Monarch High School. And I think the folks at Monarch had gone and visited. There's only a handful really in the country. They went to Fort Collins to visit what one looked like. And now we have the opportunity to see what it looks like here. And we've seen some pretty, as you can see, some pretty dramatic results. And so we've had lots of conversations with the school principals and with the high school counselors to figure out, like, is this a fit for your school? And how could it be a fit for your school? And what parts of it need to be the same everywhere? And what parts of it can be a little flexible and responsive to the school environment? And so the important part for us is to make sure that there is a full-time employee, a mental health advocate or a counselor who is staffing the center. So there's a consistent person that's there at all times. But there's also lots of details. We've learned a lot this year, we'll continue to learn as we go, but we're building off of our lessons in Monarch and applying those across the district.
Just to add to that, I'm really excited to watch this great idea and investment scale across the district. And if you think about, especially at high school, the spectrum of services that we provide, you know, to provide a no-frills, no-stress, drop-in place where you can begin to enter into a place to get support, very different than scheduling an appointment with your counselor, going into the counseling department. It's funny, I was talking to my family about, you know, what a cool idea I thought it was, and I was talking to my son, and he's like, "Oh, yeah, I've been there." I was like, "Well, okay." But that's the kind of place it is. There's no stigma. It's a place to go. Folks know what it is, and it creates an entry point, I think, for our high school kids who have never needed an entry point, a lower threshold to be able to just, "Hey, I'm having a bad day," or, "Hey, this is what I'm thinking." And Greg McDonald, who's been running, who's been running the Wellness Center at Monarch, has done just an incredible job with that. And so we're excited for the partnership. But Beth, to Allison's point, right, you know, these, you know, these are things that I think our staff is very excited about, but when it comes to finding the additional dollars for that, that's where our partnership really comes in and being able to work with Impact on good ideas that we know our community supports and allows them to fund and see their impact in our schools, I think is how our relationship has really matured and advanced to allow our community to really support and engage in things that make a difference for our community.
One thing I'd add, too, is, you know, the tricky part, we always shy away, typically shy away from funding FTEs because it's hard. And it's hard to continuously raise dollars for things. There are some programs that are really tangible we can raise funds for. So we're thinking about everything with sort of the exit strategy, too. And so we're looking at a multi-year grant that we would go after in partnership with BVSD so that we would find the funding for next school year and then also buy ourselves time to have a longer runway for this to be something that we keep, that we keep going.
Kitty?
So I also want to talk about the wellness. I really love this idea. And I'm wondering if you are, at this point, and maybe you're not, formulating ways to do an evaluation, quantitative and qualitative, to see, you know, what kind of difference it makes.
Absolutely. So this is a $1.2 million investment between the Wellness Centers, the mental health advocates, and the ongoing parent education around mental health. It's a big investment. So this is where we bring in outside evaluators to help us assess exactly that. And it's not just numbers. Like, it's great to have data that this many kids came through. I was talking with a principal today who's like, "Well, maybe that's not the best data point because do you want kids coming back? Or do you want kids coming in, getting some coping strategies, and then not having to come back as often?" So absolutely, that'll be baked into what we do. And I think the cool part and what I'm hoping is compelling to donors, because we're kind of going out on a limb here, we have not raised these dollars yet, but we're committing to BVSD that we will raise them and make them, and make that happen. What I think is compelling, though, is we can see what works and learn from different environments. So we sort of have a natural experiment by having this in five different schools of what maybe, what maybe works better in some schools or what, what types of things we want to continue and build upon. So absolutely. Built into everything we fund, to be honest, Kitty, because we, we raise dollars, they're often grant funds or they're individuals, and we have to report back exactly how we spent them. So we're big on evaluation.
Thanks for that presentation. You, your team is doing more than ever before, and I'm, knowing the size of the team that you have, I'm curious, you know, how this, the sustainability of it all and how you plan to grow, you're planning to grow your endowment in the future, but the capacity and the volume of your staff. And also putting in a plug, you have a cadre of many, many volunteers, and I can imagine you are always looking for more to sign up on your website. But how are you, how are you or how can we help you cultivate those teams of volunteers, active, maybe some donor activity or supporting your team's need to grow to take on the growing needs?
Well, Nicole for Impact on Education Board, thank you for asking the question. No, I think that that's, just even asking that means a lot, frankly. I think we are, we do work hard. We have a very lean team. But I think we're also trying to be really smart about it, and I think that's where the partnership comes in, too. Because although we're more than just fundraisers, in a perfect world, we're funding programs more so than really running programs all the time. And so it's often the case that we're kind of supervising at a high level, but we're really letting BVSD run things. And then there are some where it just requires a heavy lift and a heavier lift, and that's where we need to make bigger investments. And, you know, I think there are loads of ways for folks to certainly to volunteer. We are always open to folks who want to donate and support us. And I think we're doing a better job of building relationships, not just at the district level, but also at the school level. There are still tons of people in this community who don't know about us, don't know who we are, what we do. And so I think the more that folks can just, I mean, really the opportunity to be here to present with you all, but opportunities to talk and be visible are really, really helpful for helping us grow our impact because it grows our donor base and grows what we're able to do.
And I know you host a PTO event every year that I've heard really great things about. So if PTOs, folks on PTOs are not attending that, look into that in the future. You know, I, this question is maybe for Dr. Anderson. Listening to Allison Billings talk about the grants she's collecting, the donations she's collecting, I know we, as a district, are collecting grants. We are spending a lot of resources in this area of mental health. We're hearing from our parents and our teachers and our community members that there still is more work to be done. I am looking ahead at a budget that seems kind of uncertain in the years to come. Are we, what types of data are we collecting around benefits for these programs, returns of investment, sort of capturing things that we, as a board, might be able to look at in addition to our school culture and climate survey? I know on our metrics dashboard, we have one of the questions that we ask in that survey available publicly. But I'm really curious to know about where, the state of our students in BVSD in a more concrete manner and sort of how all of these wraparound services are really providing or not tangible impacts and benefits. And is that something that we're collecting in all these different avenues with all these different folks who are trying to help us tackle, as you adequately said, a really big community issue?
Sounds like a fantastic opportunity for our board prioritization meeting. Because what you're talking about is a comprehensive look at all of the things that we're doing collectively, and then what is the evidence that we have that the impacts are paying off on our investment set? You know, I think the question that we have to ask ourselves is, is that the right measure? Or are these just services that we need to provide as just a standard service for our kids and community? I do think that, you know, between our mental health advocates, our counselors, our school psychologists, our investments with Impact, there is a lot. And so let me think about how we might put that together. And if there's interest in the board on hearing an update on that, that's something we could look to do in the fall, and consider that during prioritization.
Thanks.
I could add one thing. In talking to other districts, it's been really interesting for me to see the way that BVSD is really committing to mental health as a priority, even with the work we've done so far and with this Wellness Center and the mental health advocates. I mean, it is a place that BVSD has said, "We need your help." And there are other school districts that are saying, that are taking a different approach. And they're saying, "Our job is to educate kids, and their mental health really isn't our issue." And I've been pretty shocked to find that out, but I think it's more common because schools, for all the reasons, right? Schools are so underfunded, but it's actually made me prouder even still of our school district and the fact that, you know, any issue that shows up here, we're like, kids, you know, we're home during the pandemic, okay, we got to feed them. It's like, all these things that aren't really our job become our job as a community, and that's the way that BVSD approaches what students need. And it just has made me really proud to know that our district is embracing that, you know, this is, if it's around our kids, like, we've got to step in.
Kitty?
I just have one more comment. In case you didn't know, you can donate automatically monthly to Impact on Education. I just started doing that, and I got a really nifty bag that I wish you hadn't...
Kitty's trying to take Nicole's spot on my board. Okay.
I wish you hadn't had to spend money to send it to me, but it's a great way to support Impact. So I would encourage everybody, even if it's a small amount. I'm not giving a ton.
Thank you, Kitty. I appreciate that. And thanks to the board for all of your support, and look forward to seeing everyone on May 3rd at the Impact Awards, and thank you for all of your service, too.
So I still have questions.
Oh, sure, Kathy.
I get to go last. Richard, why don't you go? Go ahead, Richard.
I just want to thank you, Allison, for all your hard work. Coming from a nonprofit background and being a CEO of a nonprofit, I know exactly how much, how hard you work in order to do what you do. And I remember when I first met you, we were at the coffee brewing market. I don't know if you recall that or not, when you first came here. And I immediately thought that you were a great person because you had this equity lens in your thinking. And I can see that happening. So I just want to thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for all the hard work that you do. Thank you so much.
So picking up on Nicole's thread, it seems like we have lots of different programs, but I'm not sure how they communicate to each other and how they work together. I mean, I... mean, I understand, and I just, I don't want to push back, but I also understand that there's a lot of concern, not in Boulder necessarily, about what their proper role is of education and where the role of the parents fit in and where the role of educators fit in. And so I just think we have to be really careful about how we talk about that to make sure that we stay in a lane that our community is really comfortable with. But on the Wellness Center, it doesn't feel to me like that's wraparound. It feels like it's drop-in. But what I'm wondering is if a kid shows up there who is in significant distress, walk me through how you get that kid, the kind of service and a therapist and ongoing support that that kid might need from the second they walk in to making sure that they have what they need. Because I know there's a whole lot of, it's not easy to find that kind of support and follow-through.
So I would think that that would be a question better for our staff to answer. And I don't know that Tammy is here, but we can get you an answer either through our Fire News and Notes on how that entry point connects with the other pieces to our system.
Yeah, I just think it would be helpful to know how it all relates so that we don't have, so that a kid can feel supported from this, you know, if a kid really needs it, to make sure that they get that continuing support all the way through. The drop-in, I understand serves a different kind of need, but I think making sure that we're following through. And then, I'm just curious, we've heard a lot about what's going on in some of our schools around the having one, you know, one adult that a student can connect to that's an advisory. How does, does this not connect at all to advisory? Is this in addition to what would be your thinking around kind of the role of advisory and trying to support some of these students in kind of the drop-in that you have?
So for the schools that do have advisory, I think it might be different for the schools who don't have advisory. And again, I think that the beauty of a Wellness Center is that it's an entry point regardless of where kids are, that they may have never, may have never been on our radar. And again, you know, the individuals that are hired in these roles are individuals that work, they're part of our teams in our schools. The funding comes from Impact. But again, you know, the idea that these really provide just opportunities for if a kid's having a bad day or needs to calm down, right before the Wellness Center, they would skip class, go hide in the bathroom, right? Leave. Nobody knows where they are. Then the kids get in trouble, issues compound. So I think from just a design perspective, the idea that we'd have these spaces where it's okay to take a minute and to be able to access, that's important. But I'd be more comfortable getting some responses from our team on how this went. Well, these Wellness Center investments are better connected to the other services that we have, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah, and I think we had a presentation a while ago about potentially working with Hazel Health and all of that. So I just think all, trying to figure out how all of that's connected in supporting our students. I'll bring it up during agenda-setting requests because it seems like it might be a good time to talk about that.
Yeah. And just so you know, Kathy, all of this is being co-created with the BVSD team. So Stephanie Farren and Tammy Lawrence and the folks within BVSD are absolutely part and parcel of figuring out exactly how this will work. But those are valid questions and the same ones that the administrators have. And what happens, you know, is this a way to ditch third period or get out of your test? I mean, there's stuff, right? But I think Rob's absolutely right. Kids are otherwise somewhere else. And this is a great safe space for them to be.
Yeah, I think it's all, it's all great work, and I appreciate your coming and spending the time to let us know what you're doing. So, any other questions, board members? All right. Thanks a lot, Allison. Thanks to your board. All right, next, Rob, I think we have a legislative update. Is there anything that you would like to address?
One small thing, the School Finance Act, you know, so we're hearing rumblings that there are, that there may be some movement on a last-minute change in the School Finance Act. I don't have anything for sure. If that were to happen, and potentially changing things like averaging or cost of living, that would negatively impact our school district, and we will be down at the Capitol fighting. Number one, it's too late to be changing the School Finance Act. It's a really complicated thing. Number two, that you should be partnering with school districts to know the unintended consequences. You know, you fix one problem, you solve, you know, you solve one problem, you create seven. You know, there's, and certainly the School Finance Act needs work, to be clear. But there's, you've got to engage educators. You have to engage school districts. And it's really deep, heavy work that it's just going to take some time. And so I will continue to update the board and our community on what's happening with that. Should know something by late this week, maybe early next week. But if a School Finance Act drops that changes cost of living or averaging, the impact to our district will be millions of dollars. In addition to declining enrollment, as we know, which is going to be millions of dollars. And so, you know, our hope is that the legislature does what all school districts have asked, which is, is to make this whole, fill in the negative factor. Use the dollars, the billion dollars in the state education fund. You know, remember, we talked about this at a previous meeting. It doesn't fully fund education. It's a great start. And so anybody's focus on beyond doing that is either pushing something that's, that has maybe a few individuals have interest in, as opposed to what's, what would help each and every school district in the state of Colorado. So more to come. School Finance Act, we have close eyes on it, and we've engaged with some members of our delegation. We will be engaged heavily with our entire delegation if anything comes out that will potentially take resources away from the kids in our school district, prevent us from doing the work that we're doing that we know is working and giving supports to the kids, the supports that they need.
Board members have any questions on that? Rob, where are we, do you know, on the Accountability Bill?
I think it's moving forward. I think that the original versions of the Accountability Bill have morphed a little bit as more people have taken interest. I think that the task force to study the Accountability Bill has gotten pretty large. I think there's danger to that and also potentially benefits. The more, the more minds, you know, trying to think through some of these complicated problems, I do think is a good thing. And so we do think that that's moving forward. But we'll just have to continue to watch. And the end result, I think, will be different from what the initial result was. I just hope the task force doesn't lose focus and doesn't broaden its scope to a place where it's just a bunch of meetings that end up not resulting in any changes. And that's the problem sometimes if you get these things too big, is that you can never come to consensus. And I hope that we don't do that by design, by making the committee so big that it doesn't have the impact that we'd hope it have.
On the School Finance, what makes me anxious is there's something called the Cost of Living Factor, right, which you were talking about, which is the biggest factor. And it's not protected by Amendment 23. So the spin can be that they're giving us the 8% cost of living, or inflation that they're required to under Amendment 23 while they're taking money away that's not protected by 23. And I think that trying to explain to our public how the conversation is that they're complying with the Constitution while they're still cutting us is just going to be, I think we're going to have our, we're cut out for us to try to explain something that complicated. Because it is potentially, that's how we have a negative factor, because it's considered a factor, so it's considered not protected by Amendment 23. And in part, that was the design of 23. They didn't want to put everything in the Constitution, but it's ended up being kind of a mixed blessing at best. And then there's, as we all know, there's no facility or support for any of our facilities coming for anything. So I think there's some big holes that we still have to address, but that's my concern, Rob, is that the way they're going to talk about this is, we're just going to look like, you know, why aren't you happy? You're never going to be happy. You're getting this huge inflationary increase. And at the same time, they're taking money away. So I share your concern. And I'm also worried about the timing. I am hoping at some point to be able to cancel our end of June meeting, but if they don't get us a School Finance Act and we can't do a budget, we're going to have to wait and see how that goes, I think.
And I would say that the unfortunate nature of a last-minute changes that are happening, potentially happening behind scenes without anybody knowing what's happening, right, as a strategy, you know, we have commitments to our employees. We have commitments to this board to bring a preliminary budget in two weeks. And when you start to change things, when you come out and state, here's what inflation is, here's what coal is going to look like, and then you change that at the 11th hour, right, you have districts that have already settled with their bargaining units around commitments based on those numbers that have already been shared, right? And so I know that there's districts that, I mean, large districts, you know, partnering districts, you know, if these potential changes happen, looking at $30 million, you know, $40 million less, averaging is a real thing. I mean, it really would be painful for districts. And so, you know, my hope is that this is just all rumor, and that, and that, that the School Finance Act comes out and doesn't try to do anything that creates new losers in a formula to try to, to drive dollars to other districts when they should just allocate more to education K-12 in general, right? They still haven't made a sol. When did the BS factor, when was that taken into, when did that take in? 2008, 2009? Yeah. I think it's time for it to be over, seriously. Like, you know, come on.
And we're also waiting because there's supposed to be this grand fixer on property and property taxes and trying to respond to what's going to go on the ballot. And of course, we've not heard anything around that. So there's still a lot of moving parts that, thank goodness, we're being guided by the steady hand of Bill Sutter, who's seen all of this 100 times and is not flappable by any of these things. So we'll look forward to seeing what happens, but I think it's going to be really challenging. So, anything else, Rob? All right. So now, we can move to the consent agenda. I'm assuming everybody's okay that we keep plowing ahead?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, March 13, 2023. 7.3 Approval of Minutes, March 14, 2023. 7.4 Approval of Minutes, March 14, 2023. 7.5 Approval of Minutes, March 21, 2023. 7.6 Approval of Contract to HMH for into-reading/ or reeble la lectura, writable, and PD for K-5 literacy materials. 7.7 Approval of Contract to HMH to purchase 6 through 8 math materials for academic services. 7.8 Approval of New Sixth Grade Bilingual Elective Classes at KC Middle School. 7.9 Award of Contract of Program Management Software and Managed Services. 7.10 Community Bond Oversight Committee Membership Recommendations. 7.11 Fiscal Year 24 Chromebook Purchase. 7.12 Fiscal Year 24 GoGuardian License Renewal. 7.13 Fiscal Year 24 Google Renewal. 7.14 Fiscal Year 24 Power School Renewals. 7.15 Phone Services Contract Amendment Fluent Stream. 7.16 Resolution 23-08 Non-Renewal of License Contracts. 7.17 Grant Community Montessori School Preschool Equity Scholarships Temple Hoinbuehl Foundation. 7.18 Grant Health Services Comprehensive Health Education Colorado Department of Education. And 7.19 Grant Justice High School 21st Century Learning Center Colorado Department of Education. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Stacy, seconded by Kitty. Is there any conversation or questions about what's on the consent agenda? Kitty and then Nicole.
Yeah, so I just, I mean, not just noticed, but when I was going through this, the CIBOC is almost 50% people who live in Boulder. And I know that it's not always easy to recruit people, but I was really hoping to see some of Eastern County just better represented.
All right. Okay. Nicole?
Since you brought up that, I want to thank everybody that applied and offered to be on that really important committee. So thank you to those community members that we just approved tonight. You know, I have a question on 7.8. It doesn't feel good to prove a course that we don't really know what it's going to be yet for KC Middle School. And I wonder, I know our policies provide language around what our expectations are, but do we have a sense in that 7.8, it says, recommended to approve the middle school elective courses that will be determined in the future. Do we have a sense? Are they going to be similar to other elective courses that are provided at our dual-language schools? Do we, any information and clarification there?
Dr. Anderson?
Looking at our team, so the concern is that there's just not enough specificity to be able to, at this point, approve the bilingual elective class? And I guess I'd be, I'd be looking to see, and maybe we need to go deep, we need to pull this and go back and think about this, if there's concern through the board on why there isn't more specificity here.
I mean, it says that they didn't realize the deadline according to board policy, and they need more time. So they're asking for us to approve the time to figure it out. I just, is there any indication? I'm just, I don't necessarily want to put the brakes on KC getting an elective course. Given our conversation around, earlier today, around curriculum and course planning, I just was curious if we have any indication of where this might be headed.
Dr. De La Cruz, thank you.
Dr. Miller's working with the CLDE team to create the new bilingual coursework to expand program offerings. And so if need be, we can certainly, since she's out of town tonight, we can certainly, if the board would like to pull the item and bring back more information. But I know that the intention is to add the electives needed to round out the bilingual offerings. I don't have more information than that. Anti-climatic.
With the big idea to get closer to just more courses being offered in Spanish, correct?
Yes.
And we don't know what that elective would be because we don't know who's going to teach it, or we don't know--
All of the above.
I believe the course titles are in the recommended action, and they just aren't detailed in the description. So I think it's just where we've put the content. The recommended action says it's recommended the board approves Bailes del Mundo and Arte y Cultura del Mundo Hispano.
Where are you seeing that, Kathleen? Because it's not attached to the item.
Oh, I'm sorry. The titles are just in the recommended action of that agenda detail.
Apparently, it's not showing up on my view of board docs, so. So can you read that? So there are course titles. So can you share that one more time, just so that might help with my question?
My high school Spanish teacher is so sad right now. It says, Bailes del Mundo and Arte y Cultura del Mundo Hispano.
Hispano, what?
Yes. Thank you for the grace.
Thank you for that clarification.
It's under recommended action. It's just not clear to see it. Do you see it? Yeah, I see it. Yeah.
Okay, I mean--
Does that help, Nicole?
That is great. Thank you.
All right, we've cleared that up. Bet it was fun listening to you speak Spanish, Kathleen. So board members, any other questions about the consent agenda? All right, Laura, can you call the roll, please? Garcia?
Yes.
DePert?
Yes.
Niznik?
Yes.
Rajpaul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes. Motion passes.
So we have two policy study items. Are we okay plowing ahead, board members? Okay? So we are going to turn the floor over to you, Kathleen, to talk about the two policy studies that we're studying this evening.
But only if you do it in Spanish.
But only if you do it in Spanish, as requested by board member Niznik.
I am seriously going to work on that. I'm disappointed in myself, I have to say.
Okay, so the first--
Okay, so the first policy study item is one that we spent a great deal of time on in February. This is Board Policy AE and the Associated Regulation. This is the board's accountability and commitment to accomplishment policy. We had a work session on February 21st where we reviewed a red line that reflected a lot of work from the District Accountability Committee. This has been a holdover, I think, since 2020, and we are really glad to put it on the board's agenda tonight for official study. Since we were together in February, we did make additional revisions to reflect the board's input. In particular, a couple of examples, the board had asked that we detail the statutory duties for both DAC and SACs in the regulation to make that clear, rather than just summarize those. And we removed some of the detail around meeting schedules to give our DACs and SACs increased flexibility. So we don't always have a work session about policies, but in this case, we did. So it is here tonight for study, and we are hoping to bring it back at our very next meeting for adoption.
Questions, board members? Nicole?
So, two questions, or maybe suggestions. So under DAC membership, when, the way it's laid out, it looks like you have to have 56 members and the six individual members who make up the three parents, one teacher, one administration. The way it's ordered reads, and the way the words flow makes it sound like, I think it's the plus that's getting to me, one member from every school plus those. Do you see where I was referring to?
You're on page one.
Yeah. So that just, that's not a, if we could change that to make it clear that those individual members should be monks, could, can be monks at one member from each school, I think that would be really helpful. And then my other comment question is on the last paragraph on page six. It was changed that SAC members could miss four meetings, but SACs are only required by state statute to meet quarterly, which is four meetings. And so a member could miss the entire year and retain membership. So I would suggest that we consider going back to the three that looks like it was struck, or something other than the four.
Nicole? I mean, sorry, Stacy?
Yeah, I see that in here, it still talks about the at-large membership, and there seemed to be great concern over, on some school board members, that that not be included. So I'm not really sure why that's still there. We, if I recall our discussion, we were not at all convinced that having at-large members would create what we were told it would create, which is a more diverse group and all of those things. So I'm actually not really in favor of keeping that in. I'm not speaking for everyone, but we did have a conversation about that. So having it still there is a little bit of a surprise.
I'm sorry, did we answer your question? Well, Kathleen, can you look at the, are you going to respond to Nicole's recommendations and then we'll talk to yours? No, that's all right.
I do see that. I don't honestly recall why it was changed from three to four. I was trying to phone a friend there and look at Chris Haynes and see if he remembers. Nope. So I like that suggestion. Yes, we can do that. And, board members, this is a question. That is just an oversight from my notes, board members. I apologize.
Anything else? Nicole, anything else?
I was gonna say, I know we weren't all in agreement. I am in favor of allowing the at-large membership. My question at that time was include some buffers, and so I wonder if that's something that we want to vote on as a board of whether that should be included or not. I'm happy to follow the will of the board, but I feel like that will, that has been used as an effective tool to increase diverse representation and outreach to some of our community members in the past. So I, with those safeguards that have been added in this red line version with no more than 10%, I would be comfortable, happy to keep it in there. And if there is disagreement, I'd be happy to, you know, follow the will of the board.
The at-large members now, are they, are, do they make the group more diverse? Anyone?
I mean, that would be the question, right? I mean, if that's the purpose of them, and it sounds to me maybe they don't, because no one's yelling, yes, they do. So.
Chris is head nodding, so what's the procedure here? Or do we?
The procedure is really to take in additional board member input at this point, and then we will return a red line to the board for specific consideration, which means we probably, we will be back for study again on this item. I'd like to go back and review my notes and the DACs memo on this point, and then come back to the board with a red line that addresses it.
That's what I was gonna say, maybe you could have the data that Board Member Zuss was asking for that'll help us figure out what the at-large is needing, and it would be helpful to have those facts. Lisa, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm happy to see the data, but I just wanted to agree with Stacy that my recollection was that we had several people concerned, and that I want to add my voice to hers, that this is not something I'm in favor of.
Anything else on this study, since we're bringing it back for study? Would that be in two weeks, Kathleen? Will that give you enough time at our next regularly scheduled meeting?
Yes.
Does that work, board members? If we have it back for study in a couple weeks? Sorry to make Chris sit through all of this, only to have it come back for study, but we appreciate you being here, we really do. All right, anything else on this, on this policy? All right, then we will move on to Board Policy KB Family and Community Partnership. Kathleen, I'll turn it over to you again.
Thank you. This is a new policy that is proposed for study tonight. This board policy came to us from our DAC and reflects a lot of work by the DAC Policy Subcommittee. The way the process worked in this particular case, sometimes it is that we have an existing policy and I start a red line, or we'll start with a CASB sample. This particular document came straight from our DAC Committee, put a lot of time and work into it. We went through a lengthy process of collecting input, because we know that's the board's expectation. So after I received the draft policy from DAC, I took that policy through our internal staff stakeholders. This was back when Dr. Messier was here, so you know how long we've been working on it, because we certainly collected Sam's input. So we gathered a lot of feedback, and I made some revisions to DAC's draft document to make it consistent with the board's other policies. So in large part, that, that change that I made was moving some of the language about community partners from this policy to our strategic partnership policy, which is another one we'll be reviewing, and then just trying to align them and eliminate some redundancies. Attached with this agenda item is DAC's complete memo on the topic. I think as legal counsel for the board, I see my role as making sure that any red line to be our policy considered by the board reflects the legal requirements, that it aligns with other board policies, and that it's practical and realistic for our district and our schools. So there are a few items that were in the DAC recommendations that are not in the policy that's presented for study tonight. In particular, the main item was a suggestion that there be a requirement for each individual school to have a partnership policy, that, or a plan that they would adopt and that they would implement. We are fortunate at the district level to have Dr. Bianca Gallegos, who is responsible for our partnership work at the district level. It's a big job, and Dr. Gallegos is able to do it at the district level. I did not put the recommendation that each school have such a plan in the red line, because I'm concerned about asking that work to be done at each individual school without that district support. There are a few other items which the board can see. If you look at that board, at the DAC memo, their proposed red line is the very first pages after their cover page. So I'm happy to go through those items specifically. Other than that item about school plans, there were only a couple of pieces that I didn't move forward, including the language on their page two about a district liaison who's deputized with authority. Still making sure that we present the board's priority, which has been clear since I've been in the district, that we're not just getting input from families, we aren't just engaging families, we are looking to establish legitimate, meaningful, important partnerships. And I believe that that's what this policy presented to the board tonight proposes.
Thanks. Board member comments or questions? No? Kitty and then Nicole?
Okay, I already emailed this to Kathleen, but I would like to request that all of the acronyms and initialisms that are in this should be, the organizations should be written out, so that everybody knows what they're talking about. Most everybody will probably know PTAs and PTOs, and everyone will know BVSD, but I think the others ought to be written out.
All right, anything else? Kitty? Okay, Nicole?
That was one of my comments as well. In that same paragraph, I also would like to have us capitalize this school accountability committee, like match what we have with district accountability committee, adding the words "but not limited to," maybe considering adding equity councils in there, if we're gonna add those. And then I just wonder, if we want policies that are, that have longevity, is this a consistent practice to list currently existing groups or not? Because as groups change, then the policy becomes quickly outdated. And so trying to highlight the good work that these groups do within our policy, I think, is wonderful, and it might bring more attention to them and draw more interest in them. But if those groups change over time, you know, just how are we handling those types of situations in our policy work across the board?
Yeah, I will say that my preference is not to use names like job titles or group titles, because they do change, as we talked about earlier tonight with the Curriculum Coordinating Councils. They just, they just are very likely to change more frequently than we might undertake board policy review. In this particular circumstance, I went with the language proposed by DAC, because these groups have been really important and I think instrumental in this work around partnerships. But I certainly agree with the point, Board Member Rajpaul, and would be happy to take the board's direction about preferences there.
Is, does the board care about leaving those in or taking them out, Richard?
There are so many organizations out there that might be offended if they see this policy and they're not included, okay? But I really would like to maybe lobby for keeping the, I lost my page here. Where it talks about BVSD parent organizations and groups, including nonprofit organizations that serve parents and families.
So you want those specific words included there, Richard?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, anything else? Board members, all right with that? All right, anything else on the listing, or not listing, of the organizations? I'm not seeing any strong feelings, Kathleen, so. Stacy?
I think it's probably best to take them out, because for, an example is FET. I mean, FETS come and go, there could be a time there's no FETS, but FETS in our policy, it just doesn't feel right. Those are my thoughts.
All right, Nicole?
I would be open to removing them as well, just to save us some legwork down the road when somebody catches it, or when they're not at all of the schools, or tying us in.
But, okay with Richard's generic language, which is including, right?
Yeah, and the policy does formal, say, formal and informal parent organizations and groups. And so maybe it's formal and informal, I mean, like tying the word parent in with Richard's idea, just to have a bigger umbrella, if that's what we're after.
I think you have the, you can wordsmith that, Kathleen. Okay. All right, this one, are we gonna be ready to bring this back for action in two weeks, board? If Kathleen makes those few changes? Okay, I think. All right. Anything else on this one, board members?
I just want to say thank you for the legwork on this one. It was a long time coming. It's a nice, goes along nicely with KBA. So thanks to the work of the District Accountability Committee and BVSD staff to get this. It really does show our community and show our schools where we want to be, where we believe the power is in with partnerships. And so just thanks to all of you that put the work in there.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo that. Thanks, Chris, for being here, sitting through the meeting, your collaboration with DAC and with Kathleen and with staff. I think it just shows a really important partnership, so I really appreciate all of that. All right, so future agenda requests, board members? Are there future agenda requests? Nicole?
The one I touched on with Rob, Dr. Anderson announced. Thank you.
And I have two, Rob. One would be an update on UPK, since we're sending out to our, we're still wondering when people are gonna know when they're matched and what's going on, and it's still kind of a big mess. I think if we could get an update for our public on UPK, I think the deadline's supposed to be the end of April, so I'll leave it up to you all to kind of read the tea leaves, but I think we might even need one or two, because I think there's a lot of uncertainty out there about how that's rolling out, and kind of where our four-year-olds are gonna be going to school, and so if we could, if we could add that. And then at some point, I just think it would be great for us, and this is longer term, and I'm looking at Frank, to get some guidance and ideas about how to deal with ChatGPT and kind of as we go forward, because I think maybe just an information item on what it is, and then we can figure out what we do about it. Because I, you know, I just think if we're all left to our own devices to try to go figure out what it is, we'll come up with seven different definitions, and I don't think any of them will be particularly.
ChatGPT will decide what we do.
There we go. Maybe it can figure out our budget, too. I read an article last night, Kathleen, that said that ChatGPT, the biggest profession that will be threatened by it is legal, because all we really do is wordsmith. And it can wordsmith better than the rest of us, right? So we could be out of a job. All right, anything else for the good of the order? So we have a board meeting next week, a work session, is that right? Yeah. And is there a motion to adjourn? All right, by Nicole, seconded by Kitty, and we're done by 8 o'clock.